Yeah, uh, call to order please.
Okay.
We will call.
Donahue.
Here.
McKnight.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Sterns.
Clear. Uh, pledge of allegiance, if you could please stand and face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you. If you have a cell phone, iPad, or iPod, if you need it, uh, someone will try to remind you, or I will be at the meeting. Uh, before I get started, I thank staff for making arrangements this evening by doing this by teleconference with me. I appreciate that. Um, Andy, do we have anybody standing up for public comment?
Uh, we do have a couple of guests, but I'll just do another scan. Anyone wish to speak during public comment? I'm seeing nods, no. So there is no one here for public comment, your honor.
Okay. Um, Andy, if you would give us an update on COVID-19?
Uh, again, council and public, this is just sort of the general weekly or bi-weekly reminder in terms of our council meetings. So the city of Meadville still operates under a declaration of disaster emergency with respect to COVID-19. Uh, no new policy updates, I don't believe, to share with council with respect to city business. Uh, but obviously as you see media and attention about increasing rates of infection, we encourage people to follow public health orders, wear masks, wash their hands, et cetera. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay. Uh, just a reminder, in case you're not aware, that Meadville senior high is closed down for two days. Uh, I assume it'll be opening up on Monday, as with First District School.
That's correct.
Just a reminder, in case you've not gotten that information yet. Uh, notice of executive meetings, Katie?
Your honor, uh, an executive session was held on October 7th, 2020 to discuss real estate.
Approve the last session, to approve the minutes, please.
Second.
Second?
It's the second.
We'll call. Okay, thank you.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Uh, letter of communications, Katie, I believe you have one?
Uh, your honor, I have a note here from Senator Bob Casey thanking, uh, the city for participating in their Northwestern Pennsylvania Mayors and City Managers Tell a Roundtable on COVID-19. Uh, he thanks you for your participation in the virtual event and wishes everyone to remain safe and healthy during this uncertain time.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Um, Andy, before we get to the meeting's report, since I have a vision of losing the audience, uh, do we have anybody there that we're going to be appointing to 20 or 40 to see?
Uh, no, your honor. Um, so there's no one here present. Um, so I would suggest we just continue with the agenda as written.
Okay, Andy, if you want to give the majority, I appreciate it.
Uh, I'll give, so while we have our folks here from the Pennsylvania Economy League, and I'll give just a few general updates, if you, whoever's speaking wants to proceed to the podium, you could do that. Um, so just by way of general updates, council, uh, we have begun our fall leaf pickup service through the Public Works Department. Uh, the, there's a PDF version of that that can be downloaded from the city's website. If you go to cityofmeadville.org under announcements, there's a link that'll take you to the proper portion of the website where you can, um, log into the, to an interactive GIS map to determine your dates, or you can see and download a PDF map of the pickup dates. Uh, a reminder that trick or treat is, uh, Saturday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM in the city of Meadville. Uh, happy to report that just today, we received the CARES Act funding, uh, from Crawford County through the Crawford County Block, or the county block grants, uh, for our CARES Act request in a total amount of $25,322.54. Uh, just by way of reminder, that's essentially approximately $20,000 in unemployment cost reimbursement, um, and then also approximately $5,000 in PPP, PPE, expenses, reimbursement. Um, and then additionally, uh, we learned earlier this week, I believe, or late last, that, um, we had made a CARES Act request, um, to the Office of State Fire Commissioner for funding through their fire and EMS programs, and we expect to receive $36,910 for that request. Um, the project was for new turnout gear related to the city, for the city firefighters, which is, um, due to be replaced. Um, so we don't have grant contracts or anything for that yet, but, uh, just share that that funding announcement had been made. Uh, this week, we made our minimum municipal obligation payment, our MMO payment, uh, to adequately fund our three pension plans. Uh, $1.4 million was that payment. Um, the Porter Street Footbridge project, uh, we learned just last week, I think, that administratively, we've cleared the hurdles for the fencing to be replaced under the contract. Um, unfortunately, still gonna be a few weeks before that is done by the contractor, but at least all the paperwork and contracting requirements have been satisfied. Um, so hopefully, once that, when, when in fact those final fencing panels are up, we'll be able to open up the bridge to traffic. Um, and then, obviously, um, the Park Avenue paving job, a majority of that, there's some final details to finish up by the PennDOTS contractor, or Water Street Traffic Signal Project, um, Traffic Signal Replacement Project is still underway. Um, anything else by way of update or questions from council? All right, thank you. So with that, your honor, uh, with us this evening, um, is the Pennsylvania Economy League. Um, you'll recall, gosh, going back to la, early last spring, I guess, when, um, we had hired the Pennsylvania Economy League for this, uh, with funding from the Department of Community and Economic Development. It's their stamp program, Strategic Management Planning Program, um, and with a, with the goal of sort of reviewing sort of all aspects of city finances, projections, um, all aspects of our operations, departmental-wise. Um, tonight, there's representatives, I'll let them interview themselves, if that's okay, Leanne, as you go, but, um, to, um, present tonight, sort of two chapters, if you will, in the overall study. We're focusing really just because of the, the next time we're all together here, I'm delivering to you a draft budget, uh, for 2021 in about two weeks. Uh, and so they're here tonight to share really the historical, uh, sort of look back historical, um, trends, financial trends, and then looking forward at some projections. Um, and is that a good enough introduction so far?
I think that works.
All right, so with that, I will turn it over to you for, to introduce yourself, Leanne.
Thanks, Andy. Uh, my name is Leanne Clayberger. I'm the CEO for the Pennsylvania Economy League. I have two colleagues with me here tonight. I have Patty Moorhead. She's our Director of Finance and Data Analytics. And I have Jerry Cross. He is our Senior Research Fellow. And I will, um, do a brief introduction, and then I'll turn it over to them. Um, thank you very much for having us here to speak with council. As Andy indicated, we'll be talking tonight specifically around the historical financials, as well as the projections. Um, Gary, you can flip to the next slide if you, if you could. So here's a brief, uh, agenda for what we'll be talking about. Again, focused on the historical financials, projections, and other considerations as you go into your budget, um, discussions over the next several weeks. Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, Pennsylvania Economy League is a statewide, nonprofit, nonpartisan, public research, uh, public policy research organization with a mission of nurturing strong communities through good government. We have been around for close to 85 years. Uh, we could also conduct independent research on policy issues that are impacting our communities, and we provide technical assistance to municipalities of all sizes and types under various state programs, as well as through independent, um, relationships with, with the, with communities. We also work with school districts, and we also do, um, work with, uh, state officials as well. We have locations in the Wilkes-Barre area, as well as Harrisburg. We have sister organizations in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. We truly do have a statewide representation. Um, scope of work for the stamp project overall is to do management and operational audits and review, uh, do departmental reviews. We won't be talking about that tonight, per se, but we will be providing that information to you at a later time. Tonight, we're focused primarily on the fiscal review and projection of the city financial positions. We've reviewed funds. We've had a focus on the general fund, as well as done, as done analysis on historical figures, um, from 2013 through 2019, using DCED, as well as audit data, and city-reported and budgeted figures. We also do projections through 20, through 2025. Um, we will also be developing and finalizing recommendations for, for Meadville, as well as delivering a final report at a later time. But again, given the timing with your budget, we're focused on the financials here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Patty to go through historical financials, and Patty and Jerry actually to go through the presentation. Thank you.
So Patty, before you begin speaking, and neglected to mention also on the phone with us this evening is Terry Kunkel, who is a local government policy specialist. I'm making up your title, Terry, um, with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Um, and then David with, uh, who is a subconsultant.
Right, CGR.
With CGR, who's on the phone for the presentation.
Okay. So, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. So we looked, um, we actually looked back all the way to 2013. Um, for, for presentation purposes, we use a five-year, um, window here. So, um, historically, you guys have been, um, doing fairly well. Your, your revenues are, are, um, exceeding your expenditures. Um, in the last five years, you have not, according to the audits, have not had a deficit, um, going forward. The, the issue, though, is, is that your revenues are not growing, are not keeping pace with your expenditures. While revenues grew over the period, um, by five, 5.6%, expenditures grew by 8%, almost a little bit more than double. I'm sorry. The, uh, the bullet point says 306. That was prior to the audit. Those were reported numbers, but the, the audit came in, um, at 524, um, for the growth there, 5.6%. Go to the next. This is just a graphic, uh, depiction of that. You can see how the rev, or, the revenues are kind of staying there, and your expenditures are growing, uh, throughout the period. So where's your revenue growth? Um, it's in non-tax revenue. Your taxes have actually decreased more and pretty much wiped out the, um, growth in the non-tax revenues. And if it wasn't for the transfers in to the city from the, I believe it's mostly from the rainy day fund, uh, you would not, you would not have seen any revenue growth at all. So you're basically flat on your revenues. Taxes. Um, real estate taxes, uh, your assessments have been decreasing by half a percent, and you can see that in the, uh, real estate tax numbers. Your earned income tax has kind of fluctuated throughout the period. Um, I'm not really sure if that's a timing thing with your earned income tax.
I'll remind council, the 2018 flush there was, it was the major sale of Ainsworth Pet Nutrition to, to Smuckers, which there were a number of bonuses and things that resulted in a, a one-time bump in earned income.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, other than that, you're, you're seeing just a slight growth in, um, earned income tax. Um, like from, if, if I took out, if I took out 18 and looked at nine, you know, 20,000, I'm looking at a 20,000, I'm sorry, 40,000 over 16 to 19, or 19 to 16. Okay. Um, real, um, if you could back, go back, I'm sorry. Your real estate tax base, um, is about 70% of the taxes that come in overall. And as I said, that's kind of a declining source of revenue. So you kind of have to watch that. Okay. Yeah, you want to talk?
Yeah, if you, uh, if you saw what Patty just said about the percentage of revenue that comes from real estate taxes, about two-thirds of your tax revenue comes from real estate taxes. That's not unusual for cities in Pennsylvania. Um, the, I'm used to seeing that number, unfortunately. Property taxes are the backbone of, uh, local government in Pennsylvania, particularly cities. That's historically, um, one of your sources of wealth. Uh, I said historically. Uh, recently, in the last 20 years, that has not been the case. If you look at this graph, this is the market value, which indicates what the Commonwealth, uh, every two years looks at actual sales in the county. Every two years, they come in and look at what was sold in the county at a arm's length transaction, they call it. They run a statistical analysis, and they come up with what they say is the market value of properties in, in Meadville. Uh, county-wide, but in this case, we're looking at the city. So you can see that the market value, the value of properties held by people in, in Meadville grew 36% over the last 20 years.
Yeah, question.
Yeah.
Uh, this growth in market value, that is all arm's length transactions, including sales to tax-exempt properties, which are ultimately taken off the rolls?
That I don't know the, I don't know the interior of the formula, but it is, if it was sold at an arm's length, that's taxable market value. Okay? So if it, if it went from a for-profit, well, a taxable entity to a non-taxable entity, it falls out of that.
All right.
Okay? That might be why the, if you're talking about a large sale, there's a dip in there. You notice the market value has flattened out. The, this is a good point. Taxable market value, taxable assessed value. What you're seeing here is a function of Pennsylvania real estate tax law, assessment law. According to the county assessment practices, because you can't assess on sale, like you could in the early 90s and before, when you buy a property now, you inherit the property tax assessment of that property unless you make major improvements, major changes. Therefore, the city has had a flat tax base. You don't have the benefit of free tax increases when wealth increases. You are stuck with raising millages to generate more revenue of 67% of your tax revenue. So when citizens are upset that you're raising mills, you have no choice. This is the other half of your tax equation. Real estate taxes are millages set by the council, limited by state law to 30 mills, but set, you're, you're free to set those, against a county-set assessed valuation. Two times two is four, but if two, if, if, if one is part of the equation, you need four on the other side to make four. You have to raise something to balance out. So the county's assessment practices and their, their policies under state law, you know, this is not a combination of the county. This is what state law requires assessment practices in Pennsylvania. Your hands are tied on the growth of your tax base. This is an important theme to remember when you're setting your budgets. This is essentially your wealth that you can tax to provide services for. It's gone nowhere, as you can see. The next one. These are your neighbors. This is the whole county. This is the history for the last 10 years. If you remember, the last 10 years, your market value has been flat. Your neighbors have had market value growth increases of 10 to 20%. The city's been less than 10%, obviously. Notice the blue in the other parts of the county, that's, that's a 20 to 30% increase. So you've got activity in the county. Property values are rising according to STEB, the people that do the calculation for the state, the State Tax Equalization Board. Uh, but the urban areas are not seeing the greatest growth in market value. You saw that from the chart. So that'll give you an idea of what your neighbors look like now. Gary, the next one. This is assessed value change. You're, you're decreased. The red areas fell. The, the taupe areas, the brown areas, they're, they're barely up to 10%. So you can see assessment policies are affecting your whole neighborhood. So you're seeing assessment pressures. You're seeing real estate tax pressures in those areas because they're not growing. The beige areas or the yellow areas, those are growing in response to market values. So there's more development there. There's more, uh, turning over of properties into taxable properties, and maybe new construction there, more subdivisions. Whatever drives the assessment growth there is happening to their benefit. What's ever happening in your neighborhood and yourself, it's not generating growth in your tax base. That's a very important, you have to understand that. You are at the mercy of the wealth you're able to tax. Go ahead, you want to raise? Yeah?
With your tax rates, um, you've, um, actually kept your tax rates the same since, overall, since 2015. Um, however, the, the amount you allocate to general purpose, which is for anything, has decreased since 2015. It's gone, um, from 11.4 mills down to 7.2 mills. And, um, the one thing we, we noticed here in your rates was that your recreation tax is almost, is more than half of your general purpose tax. Um, so you actually, that's, that's an odd thing. You're, you're nowhere near your tax limit of 30 mills, which would, um, which, yeah, you could always raise them too, but you don't want to do that.
For general purpose.
For general purpose, for general purpose.
And that's what it was explained was that that's a traditional method of allocating mills in Meadville. It goes back decades, that's from what we understand. Uh, you typically don't see that. You see more of an emphasis on general purpose millages, but for purposes of the tax base, it works for you. But not changing the real estate total taxes since 2015 means you lost tax revenue. You had no growth. You had a negative because the other side of the equation fell.
Sure. Can you, can you speak to, you mentioned that the relationship to, maybe the ratio to general purpose mills to recreation mills is, is different here than maybe it is other places. Can you speak a little more to what you mean?
Yeah, you, you have a, recreation typically is, is a special fund funded by millage. In this case, the city has always reimbursed the Public Works Department and different expenses that other places would consider more general fund. So, as Patty was saying, the third-class city code gives you a limit of 30 mills on general purpose. So you see you have 23 mills to go on general purpose. Uh, you don't have to dedicate to recreation of that larger percentage if you don't want to.
Right.
It works for you now, but it, it, it's kind of an unusual situation. We discussed this with Andy and Harry, and it's more traditional than it is practical.
Right. And, uh, one of the things is, when you earmark the mills for recreation, they need to be used for recreation. Whereas if you have them as general purpose mills, they can be used for recreation, but they can be used for any general purpose.
Can you explain to me what recreation mills are?
Pardon?
What's a recreation mill specifically? What is that?
That would be expenses related to recreation, maintenance of grounds, upkeep, public works, things that would be allocated to that. Okay. You do that now. You, you properly allocate to funds. It's just that the millage source, uh, and I forget the, the, the special purpose limit on recreation, but, but the general purpose millage is generally what funds your total budget. And the special funds go into, so I'm used to seeing a recreation millage of one mill or less, based on your assessed valuation. And remember, all these mills are based on your $150,000 a mill. It, it has been explained to us when we were going through the process, it's more tradition than it is, uh, purpose-driven. But as you go forward, you may want to just look at nomenclature and say, "General purpose be general purpose," you know, and, and recreation is recreation. It's just, it's an observation that we pointed out.
I'll interject here is that, because I don't think historically councils of bodies never focused on these special purpose millage rates. It's, it's been the total taxing mill that we focus, right? It's, and I, as I explained to the Pennsylvania Economy League on the phone, right, we get to the 11th hour, the final ordinance adopting the budget. We have had to formulate where we divide expenses, as, as Jerry indicated, where in the recreation millage, we might allocate as, as we get to that, to back into that millage, we're allocating some public works, maintenance expenses. We may look at that differently when we get to the budget ordinance, um, base of recommendations from the Economy League.
It's a, it's a way of doing your budget.
Okay. So this just kind of, uh, benchmarks you against, um, the other municipalities in the, um, in the school district. Um, French Creek is down there because they're in a different county, so that's why they're down on the side.
Patty, could I ask you to go back, though, back one slide?
Sure.
So I know we, we talked mostly about all the real estate tax millages, but the, the earned income rates, the, um, resident, non-resident, local sources, can you talk, just speak for, by way of reminding council and the general public of what controls those, right? Council doesn't control those, per se.
Yeah, the, uh, the one, the, uh, the earned income tax rate, uh, under 511, you are limited.
It's that Pennsylvania Act 511, which is a tax-enabling.
Pennsylvania, it's Global Tax Enabling Act.
I'm just making your, it's lingo, it's lingo to you and me, but.
I know. I already got quizzed on Perda, so I apologize for that, right? We're good. No, in, in Pennsylvania, when you're in local government, you are held to the standards of the state legislature's thoughts that you need. Way back in 1965, the Pennsylvania Legislature passed the Local Tax Enabling Act. The nickname is Tax Anything Act because they broadly defined the scope of powers for local governments to tax. But in their wisdom, because they granted you so much authority to tax everything that moves, right? If it doesn't move, pay to tax it. They also limited your ability to tax certain things. The biggest one was income. They did not want to be a confiscatory vehicle where you could just go in and levy a ton of earned income tax on, on a class of, uh, your taxpayers and possibly reduce other taxes, et cetera. So what they, what they did for 511 back in 65 was said, you can tax no more than 1% of your earned income, which is your W2 wages. It's not personal income, like the state does. It is W2 earnings, okay? So at the same time, they said, hey, we're giving out tax authority. School districts also have the ability to levy 1%. In the event both districts levy 1%, you must share it. So that's your effective rate of half a percent. You also have the ability to levy 1% on non-residents. You get to tax people that don't vote for you. That's really attractive. Except, if the person lives in that town, if their town levies a tax, you don't get it. They get a credit. It goes to their town. That's that whole earned income tax thing that you're sharing. You cannot go above 0.5%. Why is that important? If you think about the growth in EIT, well, you had that fluctuation at the, you had that crazy bump. If you think about your personal financial situation, people's incomes grow about 1% to 1.5% on average a year. Sometimes they grow more, sometimes they grow less. That's the other side of that real estate equation. Automatically, your tax base is growing when it's taxed at earned income. So you are growing at 1.5%, but you can't change that rate. So while that's a very efficient and effective tax, because it provides more income as taxable wealth grows, you can't change the rate to offset the other losses, okay? So that's one of the problems with the local government tax structure in Pennsylvania. These rates are capped by action of things when I was 11 years old, and not in consideration for the change in Pennsylvania's economic history. If you think back, those of you that are my age, cities were the engine of growth in the neighborhood. Cities had wholesale districts. They had retail districts. One of the reasons you have Realty Transfer in there, your, that's capped. That's another tax that's capped at 1%. Per capita is the most interesting one. Cities were the source of where people lived. Per capita dollars, that's a $10 rate in 1965. The weekly average wage in 65, I want to say, was $100. That's an effective rate of 10% on a weekly wage. If you adjusted for inflation today, that per capita rate should be $75. The legislature said, no, $10 is good enough for my father. It's good enough for you. So you get $10, and it probably costs you $9 to collect it, if you stop and thought about it.
Would you explain earned income for non-resident?
Non-resident is, I live in Vern Township.
Right.
Okay. I work in.
Meadville.
Meadville. I make 50 grand. You are, my employer is required to take 1% of my wages and give it to the countywide tax collector. I don't know who's the countywide tax collector for Crawford, but they hired a countywide tax collector for earned income. That tax collector then sits down and says, okay, this money was earned in Meadville, and they have a right to this money at the rate of 1% because it's non-resident. However, the resident, the place that that person actually lives, also levies that tax, because chances are, everybody in the area has 1% tax. They give a credit to the taxing body.
The entire amount.
The entire amount. And you cannot exceed that 1%, okay? You have the ability, so there are parts of the Commonwealth where there are no property, there are no income taxes. Suburban Philadelphia and northeastern Pennsylvania by the New Jersey border, New York border, up there in the, the whole, the opposite part of the state from where we are today. Those places have a history of no earned income tax, and some parts of Philadelphia have a history of that because Philly takes it all. The only place in Pennsylvania where non-resident taxes are effective, under Act 205, which is a pension ordinance tax, you, the legislature did give you the right to tax non-residents at a higher tax rate, but you have to be under the criteria for pension distress, okay? You don't have that here. So that, that wasn't one of the things. Andy said you had a million and a half dollar MMO, so. You're not, I don't think, I don't think, I haven't done the Act 205 calculation, but I don't think you're necessarily there, but that's one of the few exemptions where non-residents could be taxed. Thank you.
So if I may, if I understood you correctly, I heard that the, what we would have been receiving in earned income tax would increase as people's, as, as people's salaries are presumably increasing.
And it does, and it does.
Right. Okay. And, and I guess I'm just, I'm looking at this page nine, this historic tax revenue, and seeing that, seeing a decrease from 2015 to 2017 aside from that bump that we saw in 2018. So that's decreasing despite our per capita tax, which I imagine is our only way to know who's here, is kind of bouncing all around, is that?
Yeah, that's all over the place. But you had a loss in your tax base wealth from either plant closures, industry closures.
So folks were just making less money.
People were making less money in 20, there was actually less earned income.
Okay.
So whether that was a loss of jobs, you know, a loss of actual income. That's a lot of money there. If you take that $300,000 difference and divide it by 0.5, okay, that's a lot of money. You know, that, that's $60 million probably. So there was a hit to your local economy.
So basically, what's happening is people with jobs are moving outside the city, and the people in the city are retiring, and that income is not taxable. That's pretty accurate statement.
In Pennsylvania, cities typically see a decrease in the median earned income, not so much a decrease as a very, very slow growth compared to the county they're in and the state. So I don't remember, we have that in the report, but not here. It's in the demographic chapter. You will see how median household income for Meadville compares to the county and the state. Typically, cities lie behind that. It's just, it, it, cities have always been the home for wealthy, middle, and lower income. It's why you have nice architectural heritage, it's why you have working class property, and that's why you have lower rental. That's the city's history. Over the last 50 years, there's been an exodus, as Councilman said, there's been an exodus to the second-class townships, and that, we'll point that out later. That exodus has exacerbated your tax base. Your tax base people have left, to some extent. What they leave behind is miles of road, miles of infrastructure, things that you provided for them 50, 60 years ago. When they leave, they take their wealth with them, but they leave behind the legacy costs. And that's the struggle for all third-class cities in Pennsylvania. It's hard for citizens to understand that, taxpayers understand it, because they're taxed locally. The issues are global in Pennsylvania.
Thank you. All right, sorry. Okay. Okay, so if we look at your non-tax revenue, your, your non-tax revenues have grown 5% over the review period. The big drivers of that are your management fees, including store modding fee, I believe is in there in the sewer authority, and your state aid for pension, you got a big bump in 2019 from previous years. And I believe it was fat high again this year?
I think it's 566.
Yeah.
Just demonstrated.
Yeah. So these are growing, but it was a matter of, I believe you raised some of those. Did you raise the stormwater fee in that period?
Well, we implemented, implemented in 13.
Implement it. Okay. So as it's gone up, it's, or as you've been collecting it, collections are up to full speed. And that's where you are there, about a 5% growth over the period. So your next one is your audited expenditures. No surprise here, public safety is one of the bigger ones, which, that would be where most of the employees are, and between public safety and highway, the public works categories, highway and streets and sanitation. The general government, I believe, also includes your debt service, and that's why that's up there. Okay.
Would you define transfers out?
That's, I believe that's the debt service payment. Looks about right.
Employee.
Yeah. Okay. Again, the, the growth has been in police and general government, but I believe general government, that was, you bought some software this year? Was that, was that your upgrades and?
Hmm.
No, you can't, yeah? So, oh, I'm sorry. That's debt service. General government, let me look at my notes. General, general government includes your debt service, which ends up to be about 25%.
That's not an unusual percentage mix, at 86% for public safety, public works. That's what citizens expect from their, their government, meaning it's labor-intensive.
Okay. And then we go to the next slide. Again, personnel costs are 70% of your budget, 66.4 in 2019. And then your operating costs, contract with services, supplies and, and stuff like that is in there. And then your, your debt service over the past has increased by 400,000, almost 400,000 or 72% from 15 to 19. You did several refinancings within that period. So how do you compare to everybody else? This is Crawford County. There we go.
There you go.
So Meadville is the first column here. They spend more of their, their money, you guys spend more of your money on policing services. Titusville also is policing services, whereas the townships, if you look out to the second, second-class townships, which is the last column there, they spend their money on roads.
And the P is small, but orange is, is police expenditures, and yellow, a little easier to see, that's the highways and streets.
And that's, that's your basic division in local government in Pennsylvania. If this was a revenue by category, Titusville, Meadville, you would have that 67% split real estate taxes and 20% for earned income tax. I will bet you a dollar, if we, when I, if this graph had plotted the revenue for second-class townships, you would see their EIT over 50%. And the property tax is lower, and that's the trend in second-class townships. They have wealth from migration into their townships. People take their wealth when they move, and they also build new homes in subdivision development, which triggers assessment growth, as you saw in the other graph. So this is where you live. You live in a city, and this is your distribution of expenses. People expect you to have as much police protection as snow removal. Second-class townships, not so much on police. If we can get it from our neighbors, we will, but not so much. But we want roads repaired and cleaned. Which blue is which? Is the, the lower, blue at the bottom, is that general government, or is that debt service?
No, that's general government.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is the highway and streets in this graph inclusive of our public works and some general government expenditure as they're listed out on 17? So I guess where they're, where they're reported out, it looks like, right, police is the highest expenditure, followed by general government and then public works, but the graph reflects it a little differently?
Yes, the, I'm trying to think. I did, this was based on the DCD, DCED recording, so it.
Right, yes. To maintain comparability, this is based on your reported AFR to DCED, and they categorize things a little bit differently than we do on department and you do on your budget, but that's generated by the city. So we had to use the countywide data from DCED. Otherwise, you couldn't do Titusville, the rest of the county. But there's, there's always category problems with the DC data. They aggregate it differently. But representively, it's accurate.
Yeah. And it would include, I believe this does include your liquid fuels money that comes in that you spend on streets as well. So the next one, this is why, this is, I'm sorry, this is why Meadville spends more on, one of the reasons Meadville spends more on police. The blue areas are, areas are municipalities that have police forces. So as a city, they're, you know, Meadville has to have a full-time police department. Now, it looks like Vernon Township and West Mead have police departments as well. However, from what I understand, they are not full-time police, and Meadville has been picking up, has been backing them up through mutual aid lately. And then I just wanted to point out, we also have in there where the Crawford County Correctional Facility is. But you can see Titusville, it's like Titusville and the boroughs that are there, they tend to, they're the older center of urban centers, so they tend to have police forces, whereas the townships rely on state police coverage. And there is a state police barracks over in Vernon Township.
Correct, yes.
And Meadville also does, you know, including backing up Vernon and then West Mead, they do also back up the state police if necessary.
It, it's not a fair trade, state police, it's not an equivalence, state police and local police. State police coverage is, is just response at some point. They don't enforce local ordinances, they, they don't have to be on call. You know, if there's two cars in the county on duty, you're going to wait. But that's the default police protection in Pennsylvania. If you don't have a local police department, the state police must provide police coverage. I wouldn't stretch it to protection. Meadville, Titusville, the other, the other boroughs that have it, the townships that have it, that's law enforcement proactive, that's law enforcement prevention, and it's also response. You're giving the citizens a better value of services than the townships, except the other side of the equation, they have the wealth and you don't, as far as you don't pay for this. You following? So this is an example where regionalization would be effective, where local leadership. You already have areas where we want police, that should be a cooperative area. Where the blues meet should be cooperative. You're not going to get much cooperation in the yellow areas. But those blue areas, in the future, you may see a push towards regional provision or contracting of services from the city to the townships. They have the same expense pressures you do, your neighbor, your neighboring townships on police.
Jerry, it's the third-class city code that requires a city in Meadville to have a full-time police department?
Well, let me put it this way. There is no requirement to have a police department, except for second-class A and second-class and first. So that's Philly, Scranton, and Pittsburgh. The default police protection, as I said, is state police. That is inadequate, inadequate for urbanized areas, pure and simple. You can't run and enforce your local ordinance and your local laws in a densely populated, using state police. Over time, in, in, remember the old days when cities were the hub of commerce, and you had money, and you were the wealthy part of Crawford County, you were where all the growth was occurring. You had to have a police department to function as a city, okay? You simply have legacy costs now for that police department. No one, no one would say, a city should turn the keys over to the state police. But that's a reality you live with, and that has to go into your budget factors. That has to go, the citizens have to understand that, the public has to realize, and like the officials know it. You, you have certain things you are providing that you will provide to the future. The question is, can you provide them the most effective and efficient way into the future? And oftentimes, that means talking to your neighbors. That means a regionalization of the cop. The tax base is regionalized for the school district. Think about it. School district gets property tax for everybody in the school district. They get earned income from everybody in the school district. The county gets property taxes for all the development in the county. I challenge you to call the school district police department and see how long they come. They share half of your wealth. Call the county police department and see when they show up. You provide the basic services, but you have the least ability to pay mounting costs. That's the dilemma of third-class cities. I'm normally a happy guy. But it's important for the citizens and everyone to understand the pressure that you have at budget time. It's way too easy to reflect. We say, cut expenses, waste and fraud, but quite frankly, the only effect of government, in my view, is local government, where dollar after dollar goes in and services after services come out. There's very little loss in the machine, if you know what I'm saying.
Okay, so for our projection assumptions, we use the 20, we were working from the 2020 budget for the baseline. We do, we never assume that you are going to raise tax rates or fees, so they remain at your 2020 levels. Your real estate tax revenue, going forward, we reduced about 0.2% based on the assessment history. Earned income tax, we, across the Commonwealths, we, we see like about a 1 and, 1 and 1/4% increase. And local services, a 10th of a percent. That may sound like a lot. That's $480 adding to your base there. Your refus, over the past couple of years, we've seen a slight decrease, so we decrease those going forward. And your state aid, we kept, we, we left it at the 2020 levels. Previously, we had been growing this revenue stream. It had increased every year by about 3% per unit. But in some of our other municipalities, when they got the 2020 numbers, they were actually lower than the 2019 levels. I mean, yeah, we're in 2020.
Leanne.
And here's the big kicker in your revenue projections. I'm sorry.
Yes, question. Do your projections factor that we are migrating toward defined contribution pensions as opposed to defined benefit? Is that in your assumptions?
What do you, what do you mean by migrating? You're required to provide a defined benefit to the police?
No.
No.
What do you?
All new, all our, all three of our pension plans are defined, all new hires.
Oh, you negotiate new hires to define contribution and.
Right. So that's my question. Is this factored into your assumptions, that we are transferring, transitioning away from defined benefit to defined contribution?
Well, your pension expense grows at your payroll rate.
Right.
The state aid is dependent on number of employees you have, times the, the value that the state puts on that. Non-uniform is, is one, and uniform, there are two, times. We got a notice in September that the state unit aid went down. I, you did too.
Yes.
I forget if it's 3,000 or 4,000. It fell for the first time in years.
Yeah.
And that's a function of, of, of the map behind, the, the revenue behind it, the revenue fell. So yeah, if, if you are at a defined contribution percentage, and it's reflected in the gross pension numbers, yes, it's grown, it's in there.
Yeah.
But we grow it at the rate of your payroll, because you usually have a share of payroll goes into defined contribution.
Right.
Okay. I'm just thinking it's going to have an effect on minimum municipal obligation as we transition away.
It, it will, as you, but it's. It, it will, as you, but it's-
But it's, it's gonna, it would actually probably be a shift, because you would still have to, like, your, your MMO may go down, but you're, you're gonna have pension costs.
We got fixed contributions on the city and on the employees, right?
Right.
But your amortization on that defined benefit is probably out 20 or 30 years, and I don't know when the lines are gonna cross. It's a good policy what you did, okay? What you've done is, is very forward-looking, very proactive, but it's a very slow switch, but it's always better to start a slow journey than not start.
And I think, to your point there, the time horizon there, we're looking at projections, right, where-
Right.
Five years, yeah, you're not gonna see, in my experience, that defined, if we were talking the projection line for 20 years, yeah.
I mean, we're five years into that curve, but it's a slow curve.
Well, how many, what's the, how many employees are still defined benefits versus how many defined contribution, that'll tell you your progress, when that flips-
Right.
So, at this point, when we, we prepared these projections, we, we don't, we did not factor in COVID at this time, because we're not quite sure what's-
I'll just note for, the rental income reduction, right, that's, that was this building, that was the Amesworth lease of this, of this building.
Okay, we were, we were wondering that, as we drove in, we're like, oh, this must be the building.
We went through the building, we lost the income, and we knew you lost the income.
Yeah, the spake one.
It's a nice place to live in.
Good space for meeting.
Yeah, it's a nice place.
Tell everyone you don't.
Yeah, that will be, you'll see, that's a kind of a big hit to your projections going out. On the personnel side, we looked at the contracts, and while those may not look like your contracted increases, you gotta figure in step movement and longevity, so we have those figured in. We increased your healthcare costs by about five and a half percent, was the latest projections we had on that. We, we don't lay off anybody, we assume the employee counts and service provisions will stay at 2020 levels, and then, the other expenditures, we grew by a little bit less than 2% going forward, based on the consumer, or the core personal consumer index as of June, and your debt services per your amortization schedules.
And assumes no new debt.
Assumes no new debt at this point, and I think I got all the 2020 debt. Okay, so, going forward, the 98,000 is, is what you were, I believe, assuming you were gonna balance your budget with, using your rainy day fund, I usually try and exclude those numbers from your revenues, to see what the operations are and how they're doing. So, currently, we have you going from a 98%, or $98,000 deficit this year, all the way up to over a million by 2024. Again, your revenues are going nowhere, they're actually declining slightly, because, again, you have real estate taxes declining by 0.2% over the next five years, and no real increases in the management fees, or in the, the non-tax revenues, and we do have the hit for, you can see the jump down in 2021 for the rental income that's no longer in there.
This assumes no real estate tax increases, that's how we, we, the baseline, this assumes if things are unchanged in five years, you know, expenditure side, revenue side, changes occur on both sides, you're headed for a 10% deficit.
So, this is-
The good news is you have five years to, to work through that.
Right, so, again, the, the, there's minimal growth in taxes, I believe it was, when I got into the details, it was, earned income tax only grew by about 52,000, where real estate taxes decreased by 27,000, so, that's, you have a loss there. The big hit, again, the rental income that you're not gonna get, most other, most other revenue sources are flat. Expenditures, again, personnel accounts for 70% of your operating costs, they're gonna continue to grow, you have contracts in place, and healthcare increases, they are gonna just continue to grow, there's not, other than, again, we don't, we don't show any furloughs here, or layoffs, or, we assume that your budget, or your personnel complement will stay the same as it is in 2020. Oh, and your pension, I did look at your pension, I have a note here, your pension is at 83% funded as of the latest auditor general's report.
That, that could be a function of your switch too, because you're not adding to the liability side, by new employees, that, that's a moderate, that's a minimalist distress, and as a policy issue, I don't know that cities wanna be 100% funded on their pensions, but that's a good level to be at, 83%, that's minimally distressed, that's good territory.
Again, the departments, police is your biggest expense, followed by general government, which includes the debt service, and then public works and fire, and you, you see where, wherever there's employees, you're gonna have a pretty decent increase in the expenditure parts. So, here, here's the summary graphically, and as we said, we're gonna increase the deficits over, you know, up to almost a million one in 2024, that's if nothing changes. We always look at these as, we call them the ghost of Christmas future, if you do nothing to change your trajectory, this is kinda where we see you going over the next several years. Cumulatively, that's 3.2 million dollars over the next five years. So, what does that mean? Here's the next slide, this is our, you, you have a fund balance, as of the end of 19, I believe it was 1.8 million dollars, that was your cash balance was 1.8 million dollars, your fund balance is 1.6 million dollars. If you continue to go with these deficits, you're looking at, by the middle, sometime in 2022, you're gonna run out of cash, if nothing changes.
You'll exhaust your fund balance.
You'll exhaust your fund balance.
You'll have no choice but to cut expenses, borrow money, or raise taxes.
That's the general fund, the general.
Right. So, other things, this is your long-term debt, and as of, we believe, as of June 30th, you had about 34 million in, or, I'm sorry, yeah, I believe that's about 34 million in general purpose debt, just under 675 in parking, but then, you also guarantee debt at the sewer and the water authority, which they've been, they've been good, their, their revenues are, and expenses are good, they haven't missed any payments, and they actually pay a fee for-
Yeah, and guarantee fee, and that's common.
Right, but, one thing to keep in mind is, this is general obligation debt of the city, if for some reason, they couldn't pay their debt, the, the city would be on the, on the hook for that debt.
To the full faith and credit of the city, and it means, you're, you've pledged to bondholders, if something happens to one of your authorities, you will step in and raise taxes in addition to the fees to pay the, to pay the debt.
But at the present time, NASA and Mawa loans are essentially self-liquidated.
Yes, that's a very important point, a very important point. It's a prudent thing to do to back the authority's debt, because it lowers their cost of borrowing, which translates to lower fees for the citizens, but it also translates into apparent cosigning alone, you are the parent of the authorities, so it is your responsibility to make sure the authorities are managed properly, because you have a direct financial responsibility to their operation.
So, over the next several years, you're, you got some savings in debt service this year and next year for total debt service, but then, you're pretty much steady through 2020, 2030, I believe that is.
Yep.
And then, you have a couple of balloon payments that, that are gonna come in here, so this is kinda your long-term, look at your debt payments over the next several years.
And I think you're at about 15% overall, if I remember, on debt, the debt payment, the city direct debt payments, about 15% or so of expenditures?
I think that's in total.
In total?
It's 1.5 versus 10 million dollars of debt.
Yeah, yep. So, you, you're at that cusp, where you're, you're skating at the, 20% is high, so I don't know, Andy, how you, you guys have a, you have a credit rating, obviously, but be careful in the future, when you need to have revenue, borrowing is, is a last resort in my book, you're the elected official, you understand what has to be done, but you are at a, a percentage that is manageable and tolerable, but you're getting on the high end.
And the, the other thing we noticed within the, the capital purchases are mostly funded by debt, right? You're not putting aside, you know, even with that, those projections we have going out, that's not reinvesting in the capital needs of the city, that's mostly been funded through the debt.
Yeah, so, I mean, as we're admired of council, right, for multiple decades, or two decades at least, we've been, you know, every police cruiser, every, every street paving improvement is all debt-funded.
That's a reflection of the slow decay of your tax base, it's, it's, you've been likening that to your personal finances, if you don't have savings, you're financing, and unlike your personal finances, you can't defer and put off replacing a critical equipment, you, you just can't do it, so, you gotta work with the tools at your disposal, it's where you're at.
So, COVID, our favorite subject of years, here in Crawford County, you reached your high unemployment of 16.1 in April, luckily, you've been decreasing unemployment ever since then, as of, I believe that's August, we're down to 10.1%, you're still not as well as you were in previous years, but it is, it does look like it's bouncing back. The top five, or the top two industries were manufacturing, and, or types of jobs were manufacturing and food service and accommodations, no surprise there, those were the ones that had to close down. So, impacts that you may wanna consider for 21, 2021, real estate taxes, we told you about this, maybe evacuate the millage allocation, again, general purpose funds can be used for anything, if you specify them for a specific, a special purpose, that's where they need to be used. Make sure you review what kind of delinquent taxes you have at the end of this year with your treasurers, and you may wanna look at the collection rate, maybe temper that down.
Well, what's your assumption collection rate at the end of the budget, who do you use, 92 or 90 or 90?
Yeah, 90, 92, 93%.
Yeah, I would, I would, because, because of the changes that a lot of people, for the extended deadlines and all that, people are just waiting for the end of the year, et cetera, check with the treasurer to see what, what the real collection rate is for the end of the year, that may, we think that may fall into 21, you might lose a point or two, but that will be paid, obviously, that, those taxes will get paid, we worry about cash flow from this point.
On the real estate side, year to, year-to-date, finally, it was lagging, real estate was lagging behind a little bit, but year-to-date, it's, it's about on par, actually.
Okay, so, the people are paying later.
Right.
So, it's longer cash flow issue, you're, you're, the good side is you're losing lots of discounts.
Right.
Of, of all the cities that you folks have worked on management plans, where do we stand in relation to the percentage of tax-exempt property within the borders? Ours is like 44%, is that average, is that much higher than average compared to-
Unfortunately, that's about average.
Especially in the cities.
Cities are the home of services, you've always been the home of services, and services are, are driven by meds and eds, as we like to say, and governmental functions, right? County seats, medical things, colleges, hospitals, those churches, that's a legacy of the history.
So, if we change it to townships, what is the average level?
Oh, I think townships are less than 10%, now, we're talking generally, please, and I know I'm on TV, and I know the townships will be, you know, I have tried to townships, you know, but I know they don't have cops, so we don't have to worry too much, but, yeah, that, it's, it's, remember, if you look at local government in a historical lens, the scope, remember, your history of cities in Pennsylvania, 1920, you wanted to move from Vernon to Meadville, that's where the jobs were, otherwise, you were on a farm. Our tax structure assumes, and this is where the wrong assumption is done, the tax structure that the legislature looks out for, Harrisburg looks at the Commonwealth, all the wealthy people live in the city, everyone else is a farmer, that's the tax code for local government, we know that's not the case, but that's what you're dealt with, you have a nonprofit cluster, you can't tax them, but it's assumed that that nonprofit relates to the wealth of your citizens, they wanna live by the church, they wanna live in proximity to hospitals, they wanna live in proximity to county seat, not the case anymore. You know, in the old days, county seat attracted all the lawyers, hospitals attracted all the doctors, you wanna be able to get to work, now, you drive on the roads, you get to work, you took your income, your work, the mayor of York was fabulous, he would always say, there's lots of good jobs in New York, there's just not a lot of good wage earners, because they all drive into the city, and I'll bet you that's the same case here, there's lots of good jobs in Meadville, not necessarily all the people in Meadville work there.
And then, you know, last but not least, we, you know, you may wanna consider a millage increase, it's been five years, it's been five years since you've raised those millages, your expenses have grown, you may need to-
Just to stay even, with the assessment decay, you'd have to raise taxes by 2%, just if, I remember the, the number from the last five years, or 10 years, was it 1.9?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to, you have to, just to stay even.
And one thing that's not on the slide, but, we know that the assessments in Crawford County are, are fairly old, they just, they had that adjustment in 1985.
That was kind, Patty.
Well, another municipality we worked in had very old assessments, and it came to the point where their county started to run up against their millage caps, and right now, Crawford County's at 21 mills, 21 and a half mills, I believe.
Pretty close, yeah.
And, or 21.15, that's what it was, I knew there was a one and a five.
They have a limit too, like you do, it's a third-class county, as they bump into that limit, they will, they will proactively think about changing the assessment ratio or doing a reassessment, if they do a reassessment, you'll capture that market growth, but not going backwards, you can never capture that loss of revenue, going forward.
Let me put it in relative terms, the last time, the true reassessment was done in Crawford County, I had a full head of hair.
Fair enough, probably I did, I probably did that to here.
And so, you may, you know, you may wanna talk to Crawford County or lobby Crawford County to do a reassessment.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, our standard recommendation is, that assessment practice is not the fault of the county commissioners, they're working under assessment law, not the fault of your county assessor, they're working under assessment law, but assessment law assumes regular reassessments, and regular reassessments cost money and cost political careers.
Earned income tax, depending on what, what, like, I saw the August numbers, and you were just slightly behind 2019 levels for EIT, so, you may wanna keep your revenues at the 2020 levels, or maybe even decrease them a little bit, maybe 1% or so. a little bit, maybe 1% or so. Overall, we've seen like decreases, we're predicting about 3%, or we've seen 3% throughout. So if you decrease them by 1%, hopefully you would get the normal growth, the 1.25% that you, we've been seeing over the.
There was a lot of trepidation earlier this year when you had that 16% unemployment. That was statewide. Every municipal official I talked to was scared that you were going to have, that DIT was going to fall off a cliff, literally. We have not seen that, although DIT is a lagging indicator. The money you get today was collected 120 days ago, or 90 days ago, from the employees. November's going to be a bellwether. August wasn't too bad, you know, it was a reduction, which is the first half of years, except here where you had the shrinking of the wage base. But statewide, we're seeing 3%, that's good. And if November comes in around the same level as last year with 3%, remember, you're not getting the annual growth either, because people's wages have grown about 1.5% on average. So that 3% factors in the 1.5% growth, or 1.25%. So you're really down about 4, 4.5% on DIT. Thank goodness, we're not going to see COVID, all the, all the.
Shutdown.
Public policies shut, yeah, is it going away from a mass shutdown, because we're past that reaction and now we're into litigation. So we're saying, the overhang of money being earned today, you will not see till February. Okay? So we have 10% unemployment, so we know there's a shrinkage of the wage base, you're not going to see that in your numbers till February and then May. The prudent thing may be to hold, you know, depending on how Andy sees it, the council sees it, the prudent thing may be to adjust your EIT in your budget to either flat, which would wipe out the 1.5, 1.25% growth, and give you some protection against the COVID, maybe even decrease it by 1% and hope that, you know, cash flow is intact. And remember, even though we're saying that cash balance, cash balance, this is one of those times when it's great to have a cash reserve. You know, don't budget it, don't overspend, be realistic in revenues, and if you do need to backfill revenues because of an extraordinary event, this is the time to do it. You know, ignoring the long-term problems of tax base decay on the assessments, ignoring the problems of long-term wage growth or expenditure growth, that's not acceptable to use fund balance for. Unusual things like that, you get a pass. You know what I'm saying? As elected officials, we have to both look at the pass and go forward. That's the problem.
Are there options for the citizens to pursue home rule, changes charter, that sort of thing, that we modify the taxability of certain?
One of the recommendations in the report is to examine the home rule form of government. That has almost become a standard recommendation in these reports, simply because the constraints I outlined for you.
What is the home rule form of government?
Home rule, okay, I'll give you a little history lesson. When the Constitution was amended in 1968, 69, the legislature recognized that there, this is back in 1969, remember, when the tax law was only four or five years old. The legislature realized that Pennsylvania is so diverse, such a different state, that maybe legislation enacted in Harrisburg wouldn't work everywhere. Maybe locals needed some ability to craft their own form of government. In the 70s, there was a widespread push towards home rule, because the Constitution allowed it, the legislature passed the naming legislation on 1971 or 72. There was a lot of movement towards home rule, which was essentially a restructuring of local governments. I don't remember the number of how many home rules there are in Pennsylvania, but it's a fraction of the 2,500 municipalities. Since about 1995, home rule has turned into also a way to define your government structure, which is important, you know, for council, mayor, that kind of stuff. But what's equally important, it allows you to define your tax base. Because remember, the state legislature says you are only allowed a 1% DIT, of which you're only going to get half, and you're only allowed 30 mills, make it work. Okay? Plus, you're only allowed $10 on a per capita. So what you're saying is, I got a tax base that's frozen in time in 1959, 1965. Home rule says, that might not work for a city. They might have changed, things might have changed. Home rule allows you to design a form of government that gets you out of those constraints. It allows you to change your tax base mix, but it's not an easy process. You just can't vote for home rule. The citizens have to initiate it, or the council can initiate it.
Council can initiate it.
Then there's a government study commission of citizens that will look at the form of government and determine if that's the most efficient and effective form of government for our challenges. They will design, they first have to decide whether they want it, then they decide a home rule charter. They write a charter, which is your constitution, then the voters get to vote on it again. The voters get two cracks to vote. Yes, we want to study our government, and yes, we want to accept the form of government that the government study commission, we want to accept their conclusions. That's home rule. Takes about two years.
To your knowledge, I'm catching you unawares on this, I understand. How many home rule charter communities in Pennsylvania have entered Act 47?
Well, I will tell you the reverse. Well, I'll tell you why. I've been working on it for 27 years, which is the city of Scranton. City of Scranton has been a home rule for 27 years. The city of Scranton is a politically, they're getting out next year, they've solved their problems. So except for that exception approves the rule, the Scranton. Altoona was in Act 47. They went to home rule to be able to beat the county at the reassessment game, because they were at such caps, they couldn't afford their cops and police. They went home rule to rejigger the tax base, because Act 47 allows you to rejigger the tax base. That's one of the ironies. If you're more distressed, the state lets you jiggle, play with your tax base mix. Okay? You're out of those constraints. Once you leave Act 47, the constraints come back on. So in order to stay out of the cage and to stay escaped, coordinators recommend home rule. City of Nantico was in distressed status with a 60-mill tax rate, 6-0, was the city of Nantico, because of the assessment practices. They went home rule out of Act 47. City of Monmouth City Borough just passed home rule this year, they're in Act 47. Shamokin refused to do it, now they reconsidered. Their citizens said, no, we don't want home rule, that's just unlimited power to the government. They dropped that, and now they're, they're thinking about it again. Short answer is, home rule is generally a cure for the inefficient, ineffective form of government that's historically given to you. It's an modernization of government.
Okay, thank you.
I come from a line of creatures, tell me to shut up when it's, okay, tell me to shut up when it's appropriate.
The other fees that you might want to consider, depending on what you've seen this year and what's shut down in the future, so you want to look at those. So in the beginning, we, in the beginning of the pandemic, we worked with Pittsburgh to come up with, they did, it was the University of Pittsburgh, University of Pittsburgh and Connect out of, and the Greater Pennsylvania, or Greater Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania Economy League. And in the beginning, they were, they gave ranges of where you would see hits to revenue. And they went as high as 13% in real estate, 28% in earned income tax based on those 16% unemployment rates at the beginning of the year. We kind of simplified it now, based on what's been coming in, and we gave you, depending on, these are, these are some of the revenue streams in Meadville that we think may be affected by COVID for next year. And we gave you varying rates, 1, 3, 5, and 10 hits to revenue. And what that does is increases your deficit going forward, so you got to keep an eye on that. I mean, if, if for some reason, these all went down by 10%, you're looking at, you know, $653,000, that takes your deficit for next year over a million. So that's where we are with that. We don't think it's going to be 10%.
Patty, this is laying out sort of worst-case scenario.
Right, yes.
And more conservative toward the middle of what you want to consider. And you said earlier, we don't have crystal ball, but this is looking at what we're seeing in other communities, to be conservative, right?
I think, I think the range of 1 to 3% based on local circumstances is where you should be, because a lot of these are cash flow. You're going to get refuse fees eventually, you're going to get real estate taxes eventually. You know, the LST is held locally, it's held weekly, score monitor fee you're going to get, so it's, it's also a cash flow issue, which you're, you're in good position for that.
On the expenditure side, your biggest expense is payroll, and that's pretty much based on contracted increases. So make sure you have the right size, the staffing is where you want it to be, and what level of staff, know what level of staff or services are essential. You may want to look into longer-term intergovernmental cooperation, joint efforts with police, public works, with your neighboring communities, and delay any discretionary or capital purchases, except like if you have earmarked borrowing funds for the capital purchases. Also, you may want to consider developing two budgets. One, your normal operating costs as you see them there, and then maybe contingency planning, so that you know you can cover the vital and necessary services, police and fire, refuges, collections, snow removal. And then, of course, you would have to use your fund balance to cover any shortfalls.
The RFP, as part of the staff program, the guidelines for the staff program require the consultant to do certain things on an immediate basis. It's called an emergency action plan or a management plan, if necessary. It was in the scope of work, and what, what that usually is done is that is examined early on in the process, and we did look at that. The two areas that we looked at quickly were the current fiscal year's budget, and this is, of course, in the middle of COVID and everything else, so we were in contact with the city. But this is on a general term, regardless of the pandemic, this is a normal situation. The law says that you have to look at these two items. We looked at them, we did not see that as an issue, it was not an imminent danger to vital and necessary services. We also looked at the immediate need for short-term borrowing, unfunded debt. You don't need unfunded debt, that's a county court allowed borrowing, you just don't go and get that. We didn't see any short-term borrowing here. We didn't see an impact to your revenues that would cause vital and necessary services, and whether or not other administrative reorganization would be effectuated. Those were not considered to be imminent, but if you look at the report itself, the report gives you long-term goals to address one, I and double I, the fiscal year budget and such, and also the bottom part. So the departmental reviews and those things are also part of this, but immediately, the emergency action plan for 2020 was not needed, and we made that decision very early on. If we had not, if you needed an emergency action plan, we wouldn't be here tonight, we would have already been drafting emergency action plans, as we're doing in other municipalities. There's also was a, part of the staff program is a precursor to stay out of Act 47. The state is very emphatic about this. They don't want people going to Act 47, they want proactiveness, and they're willing to fund the initiatives that are in the report. We looked at Act 47 criteria and the city's conditions. You aren't anywhere close to meeting the Act 47 criteria. I know some cities have applied for Act 47, because they feel that they can pick and choose some of the things that Act 47 allows, whether it's expenditure controls, or whether it's revenue enhancements. You just can't pick and choose. Unless you meet specific criteria in the law, the state cannot give you Act 47. They actually turned down Wilkes-Barre two years ago, because upon review, Wilkes-Barre had home rule, had this, had that, they did need Act 47. So right now, you don't, we don't believe you qualify for Act 47 distressed status, which is a good thing.
Act 47, if a community doesn't go into Act 47, I'm assuming that A, it costs more for them to borrow money at higher rates of interest, and B, that various insurances are going to be more costly to them, is that a fair statement? I mean, like, I know that Penn Prime at one point in time was developed specifically for distressed communities. Everyone else had private work or compensation.
Oh, yeah, well, that, yeah, that's, that was, that's for municipalities that had high accident claims and such, and not necessarily limited to distressed municipalities. Act 47 is a workout program, okay? And when you're in Act 47, there may be more trust by the banks that they'll get paid. That might be reflected in lower interest rates than they would have gotten on, without the intervention, but it will, they'll be higher than a very healthy city, right? Because the risk is still there. But you, you are under constraints in Act 47 that are legal. You develop a recovery plan with the assistance of a coordinator. You adopt that recovery plan as an ordinance, and you are bound to follow that recovery plan. You work with a coordinator, your budgets are subject to review, your contract negotiations are subject to review, departmental limits, you can't go above departmental limits on contract negotiations. You're scrutinized more frequently as far as, there's more second guessing. There's not oversight, there's not, you know, you do this or else, but there's a lot more second guessing, there's a lot more analysis of it. And if you don't need it, don't get it, you know? And it's a state gateway, the state's going to tell you, you're allowed to go in or not. Because unfortunately, in Pennsylvania, it's a precursor to bankruptcy, or municipal bankruptcy.
So in summary, your revenue growth is flat, the loss of the rental income will impact your projections going forward, and your personnel costs, your expenditures are increasing, and, and a lot of that is due to personnel costs, which is about 70% of the expenditures, and those are contracted increases. And, you know, we talked about the capital investment through debt, that's the way you're getting your thing. You may want to look at starting to set aside capital going forward through, you know, start building a capital fund. And if you continue on the way you're going, your fund balance could be exhausted sooner than, rather than later. And you're not liable for, you guys are good, I'm trying to talk about you, you know, what the things was, the deficits, missing pension payments, not paying your payroll taxes. You guys are in good shape, though. Good with that.
You've done a phenomenal job.
Appreciate your confidence in us for hiring us.
Thank you so much.
So any questions from, because there's a lot to digest, Autumn, were you raising your hand there? Sorry.
No, I have a question to stay out, but, no, nothing.
So it's a lot to digest. Certainly, council, if you have questions on this material, you can funnel them to me and Gary or Debbie, the three of us, at least on these finance pieces. As Leanne mentioned, right, there's other department, I mean, there's whole chapters on police department, fire department, public works, operations, I mean, we're, those are in draft form, and there's sort of an economic development component that David, who's on the phone, has been working on. So those are in draft form and being reviewed by staff and commenting, and now, I mean, really, most of our attention is going to now focus to the budget. So will the, sort of in dialogue with PEL staff in terms of the timing of when we come back to you with these other recommending, you know, other recommendations, but it's kind of where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same touch.
Andy, real quick, on 17, the departmental expenditures, the biggest, the biggest changes, percent changes were city clerk and management, city manager. Were those new? positions there?
Yeah. So what you'll, I mean, so obviously, PEL's only reviewing what our budgets and audit and financial status, but when we, Mary Ann's position, right, as Director of Community Development, which had never existed, those expenditures have increased. That's in the City Manager's Department, for instance. So as we've changed, code enforcement, right, when we used to, it used to be in the, code enforcement used to be in the fire department budget, we brought it in into this, is it under City Manager, technically? So as we've realigned and tried to reflect, those, those make it difficult to track changes across departments over time.
Thank you.
What I will assure the public is that we definitely are not increasing our staff capacity in any meaningful way.
Andy, do you have any more at your managers' report?
Um, I want to go to 7B, which is the proposed 20, the proposed 2021 budget meeting schedule. In your packet is a series of dates. I'm just, I'm just going to run through it very quickly. So Wednesday, November 4th is our regularly scheduled council meeting. That's when the, the budget will be delivered to council with a brief budget presentation. Wednesday, November 11th, this, so this sort of follows our typical meeting formula that we've had for years. I will note, however, that Wednesday, November 11th is Veterans' Day. Veterans' Day is not a holiday for city staff, so I guess this is a point of discussion for council whether or not you want to continue with that date or if you would propose a different date. But that's essentially what happens at that meeting is a, is a required public hearing, which is really just general public comment, and then we just dive right in and cover several sections of the budget that you see proposed there, the rec authority funding, police, fire, parking funds. And then Wednesday, November 18th is a regularly scheduled council meeting. Same thing, we would start with this required second public hearing, conduct our regular business afterwards, dive into a special session on the budget. We've baked into this an extra date, Tuesday, November 24th. Following the Wednesday schedule would be Thanksgiving Eve, so I, I didn't do that to you or to our staff, but we've proposed, if needed, an additional session on Tuesday, the 24th of November. And then the two December dates are regular meetings, which would have first and second reading of the budget ordinance and third and final reading. So the real question, I think, that I'd like feedback is on that Wednesday, November 11th date, if how council wants to proceed. Any feedback there?
Voting to that date is fine with me.
It's fine with me. I have no problem with that. It's fine.
Okay.
Staff works that day?
It's not a holiday for city staff. Okay, so we'll proceed. So are there any other questions, comments, concerns with the schedule before you?
No.
All right. So no actions required, but this is the schedule. We'll have to do some special advertising of some of these special meetings, and so we'll work on the formal public advertisement that's required.
Can people affect it? The Tribune, city's Facebook page?
Tribune and Facebook page, yep. Okay, that's all, your honor, that's all I have on your managers' report.
Okay, thank you. Under all business, we have authorities, boards, and commission. We have vacancy to fill on the housing authority, and I believe, I'm not sure which two council members served on that.
Autumn probably served on it, Leroy.
Okay. You guys want to make a recommendation?
I would move to appoint Marcioe to the housing authority.
Second.
Okay. Was that a motion? Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
I will just note.
Hearing number one call.
Actually, Autumn has a question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will, I will just note, so first, first I will thank the folks who served on the committee. Again, we're going through this process for the first time. I appreciate folks taking the time. We had, I think, several really strong applicants for housing authority. I also note that the committee received several letters from the public voicing support for, for various candidates, and so I'll be voting accordingly. Thanks.
Your honor, it might be helpful, for the benefit of the public and the TV audience, it might be helpful if Katie actually reads the memo, if that's okay with you.
All right.
I mean, I know you already got the motion in second.
Absolutely.
Dear Council, as you're aware, the housing authority received four applications for the vacancy occurring December 31st, 2020 on the board. The ad hoc committee comprised of council member Autumn Vogel, council member Jim Roa, Max Holt, Tom Youngblood, and Housing Authority Executive Director Bill Thomas elected to interview all four candidates. The interviews were held on October 5th and October 7th. After the October 7th interview, the ad hoc committee voted by consensus to recommend Marcia Yowey to be appointed to the housing authority.
So you already had your motion in second. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Local call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
No.
Sterns.
Aye. We also have another appointment to Shade Tree. There is a memo marked here, so Katie, if you would read that memo, I appreciate it.
Dear Council, as you are aware, the Shade Tree Commission received one application for the vacancy on the board. The ad hoc committee comprised of Mayor Leroy Sterns, council member Autumn Vogel, Danuda.
Mike Grovich.
Thank you. Joe Galvo and Shade Tree Program Director Rick Williams elected to interview the candidate, and the interview was held on October 19th. After the interview, those present from the ad hoc committee voted by consensus to recommend Casey Dixon to be appointed to fill the vacancy on the Shade Tree Commission.
Autumn, since you sat on that committee, do you have any comments?
No, I, I did not make the interview. I do believe that Casey was the only applicant, but I know he was very interested in, in other authorities as well. I know we interviewed him for housing authority, so at least from the interview I did make with Casey, I, I think that he'll be a good addition to, to city leadership.
Okay, thank you. And I also were not able to make that meeting, but I think we made a good choice on that. So if I could have a motion to approve the appointment, please.
I make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion from council? Local call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Now, we have an updated authority board members. Terms are expiring in 2020, and I believe we're going to do that as a mass update and have that attached to minutes. Am I correct on that, Andy?
Yeah, that was our plan. So it might be helpful, so in terms of, these are into just the process by which we arrived at these, right? So these are vacancies that occur essentially at the end of this year, and we reached out to those individuals. These individuals expressed interest in being reappointed, and so the list that you have here then is Paula Burley for the Market Authority, Kirsten Ames for the Market Authority, Courtney Dodge for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Alan Schatinger for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Danuda Mikrovic, the Shade Tree Commission, Rich Kebert, the Meadville Area Sewer Authority, Jill Withy for the Streetscape Committee, and Jonathan Bivens for the Zoning Hearing Board. Each of their proposed terms are listed on the, on the attachment.
Okay. So we're going to do this as all in one list. Am I correct? Is council okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Sure.
I move to approve this slate.
That was a motion from Autumn.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Local call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. And then it's marked here as an updated vacancy list. So that'll be provided to us then?
Uh, it's in the packet. Katie, just want to review that quickly.
So the, the vacancy list, obviously, based on your reappoint, or your appointments tonight, the Shade Tree Commission can be removed, and then the last three on there, or I'm sorry, the zoning hearing board and the last three on there are reflective of those who do not want to seek reappointment. So it's current based on the reappointment slate.
All right, thank you. Under new business group, a resolution authorizing signatures for intergovernmental cooperation agreement, Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for shared services, specifically snow removal and winter maintenance between the City of Meadville, Vernon Township, Salisbury Township, Westmead Township, and Woodcock Township. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached Tier 2, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville and accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion to authorize signatures?
I will so move. I second.
Okay, Andy, discussion?
Yeah, your honor, I've mentioned this briefly in the past probably two meetings under development. This is a fairly, just a fairly simple and straightforward agreement that, among the municipalities listed, that would allow those municipalities to exchange manpower and equipment. It was initially contemplated in the event of, in, in reaction to the pandemic and in the event that you could have perhaps several members of any one of these public works departments related with these municipalities that could be ill or quarantined. This would allow then the municipalities to share, formally share manpower and equipment. There is no contemplated exchange of funds here. It's really is sort of truly mutual aid is how it's contemplated. In the event that there would be significant resources expended, there's nothing that prevents us from negotiating, you know, exchange of services likely or, or other things later in the year, but it's contemplated really is just a mutual aid agreement for that purpose, for winter maintenance.
I have a question. Do we need a mutual indemnification with this agreement, or is it in there and I'm not seeing it?
It's been a while since we've looked at it. Each party is responsible to maintain their own general liability insurance. Clause nine, release for damage caused to property from another municipality, per this municipality, is, is the whole, general hold harmless language.
All right.
That each agrees to hold harmless each other.
That works.
That's all I have, your honor, unless there's further questions at council.
If there's no further questions, local call, please.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. I have a resolution authorizing signature for stormwater easement agreement. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on the stormwater facilities easement agreement between Michael F. Thomas and Andrea Thomas and the City of Meadville for 275 Grandview Avenue. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached Tier 2, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville and accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion to authorize signatures?
I motion we authorize signatures.
Second.
I'll second.
Andy, discussion?
Yep. Your honor, this is in the same neighborhood, I think, the last two meetings we've discussed. These are just additional easements. This is public stormwater infrastructure on private property. This is us sort of cleaning up our files, giving these, and I'm grateful to these private property owners willing to work with the city, but allows us to have a permanent easement for the infrastructure itself and then temporary easements for construction or maintenance or repair as needed. And in this particular case, this is property on the east side of Grandview Avenue.
Any questions in council? Hearing number one call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns.
A resolution awarding bid and authorizing signature on Liberty Street Bridge repair. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville awarding the bid in the amount of $74,675 to Thornbury Incorporated for repairs to the Liberty Street Bridge over Mill Run and authorizing signatures on the contract. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas an invitation for bids for repairs to bridge number four of Liberty Street over Mill Run within the City of Meadville was advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, and whereas Porter Consulting Engineers Project Manager Kevin Mullins reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter dated October 15th, 2020, recommends the city award the project to Thornbury Incorporated. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Meadville by and through the Council of the City of Meadville hereby awards the bid to Thornbury Incorporated in the amount of $74,675. Be it further resolved, the mayor, controller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements, subject to city's solicitor approval, necessary to complete the contract for repairs to bridge number four, Liberty Street over Mill Run.
Motion to authorize signature?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Andy?
So as the motion states, this is a contract for prepare, repairs to the Liberty Street Bridge. The, this is 100% funded by grant funding from Crawford County's Act 13 At-Risk Bridge Program. This was a very competitive bidding environment. The city received seven bids ranging from the low bid of Thornbury, as stated, to a high bid of $185,000. The grant funds on hand will cover 100% of the construction cost. Scope of work includes repointing joints of, vertical and horizontal joints of abutment stones, replacing concrete or grout to replace missing mortar or undermined stones, removal of accumulated cobbles, gravel, and debris from beneath the bridge structure, construction of precast or cast-in-place concrete scour protection along the near abutment of the bridge, and then the bridge surface, milling the existing asphalt surface and resurfacing with a composite concrete deck, and then bituminous asphalt approaches, line painting, et cetera.
Any questions for Andy?
Andy, when do we expect this to be able to take place?
Go ahead.
When do we expect this to be able to take place?
To take place? So some of the work that, some of that's, so obviously, the milling and paving will not get done this evening, this evening, this season, but the, the in-stream work can be done probably yet this fall. Temperature conditions will dictate some of the mortar and grouting stuff, so, but there is a fair amount of scope of work that could probably still happen yet this season or through the winter. I don't expect this, other than the milling and paving, or the approaches, which will be really the final stage, I don't anticipate that there'll be many interruptions of traffic too much related to the, the scope of work.
Any other questions? Local call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Resolution authorizing signatures for a blighted property investment fund development agreement. Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on the blighted property investment fund development agreement and note for the market street properties between the City of Meadville and the redevelopment authority of the City of Meadville. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached Tier 2, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville and accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion to authorize signature?
I motion we authorize signatures. I'll second. I'll second.
Discussion, Andy.
Your Honor and counsel, this is the first project occurring in the blighted property remediation fund or investment fund. Counsel recalled that, gosh, really over the last, well, it's probably been an 18-month process of working with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. It was a proposal issued to them by, jointly by the city and the redevelopment authority to terminate what was the French Creek Valley Enterprise Zone and use some of those resources towards investing in blighted properties. That might be acquisition, demolition, that might be rehabilitation. This particular project in this, and so council recently, probably within the last month or two, established then the blighted property investment fund with funds provided from the redevelopment authority. Contemplated, however, that those funds would be returned back to the authority for various blight-related projects. The authority has negotiated purchase agreements with four parcels on Market Street, and this is next to the city's parking lot, so people will, might be familiar with the old Rhoda Shoes building, the Neon Moon Bar. So the vacant, the Rhoda Shoes building has been vacant and unoccupied for approximately nine years. The Neon Moon Building has been closed and vacant, or at least non-operable, for maybe a year at this point. And then two vacant parcels between the city-owned parking lot and then also the whole darn thing subshot. So that's the area of development. This is an agreement whereby the city would provide to the authority the funds to acquire, demolish, and do, and do general site grading and any other related expenses. Provides those funds essentially in the form of a loan, so that's why there's a note back to the city in the amount of $330,000. The payment for that loan, however, it's essentially no principal or interest payments. Presumably at the end, it's anticipated at the end of that project that the, the payment of that note would be through conveying that property to the city in the future.
Okay. Motion for signatures? Oh, where did it go that, I'm sorry. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I will just, I mean, I don't have a question, I just, I guess I just want to make a comment. I mean, I've been skeptical about this particular project from the beginning. I think reallocating funds for blight investment is important, for blight remediation rather, but I also think that it's important to, for those, the processes of how we're going to remediate blight and what blight we prioritize should involve people, and people should be engaged in the process. I think this project is coming to the public when it's too late for input and in language that people don't really understand. Community development, blight mediation has a direct impact on neighbors, including residents and business owners alike, and I think not engaging them in a process like this is doing a disservice. I recognize that this takes time and energy, but I think it needs to be a priority, especially when money is tight. It's no secret, I mean, we all just sat through an hour and a half of the kind of laying to bear or fiscal reality. I think that to use this money on community development efforts that have not seen community input is to me financially irresponsible. Thank you.
I'd like to say too that I, I agree with some of the things Autumn said in light of this, what we just heard, we might want to think about in the future, because we've already gone through this process, I respect that, but I think now with what we're going through with our deficit, our budget, instead of, we, we need to start looking at rehabbing buildings, putting them back on the tax market, as opposed to demolishing them with nobody, with nothing, no income being even thought of from them. I understand we're looking at a parking lot, the money that we're going to invest in that, how long would it take us to recoup from that parking lot? As opposed to rebuilding or remodeling that structure and put it on the tax market as a building, I think we need to start looking at things of that nature. We're not, we, as I said earlier, we just heard, you know, that we're, we're losing money. So we need to, we need to look at things that are going to draw businesses to the town.
In fact, these buildings have been vacant for a period of time, varying from a year to nine years, and there's vacant land, all of which had been available for sale if a member of the private sector were interested in it. To my knowledge, no such buyers have stepped forward. The money that we're being, going to be using to acquire this cannot be used for, for example, cannot be used to balance our budget. So it's not as though we're taking away from operations to accomplish this.
I understand. I'm not saying that that money could be used to specifically balance our budget. What I'm saying is that in the future, instead of, you know, we, we might look at more options and be more proactive in putting the property up and going out looking for businesses that may be interested.
I agree. I think that there are more revenue generating alternatives that we could have explored, and residents might have even had ideas that we haven't thought of. I will also say I don't, to my knowledge, those properties were not like publicly listed on the market, and so I, I don't know that folks did have the opportunity to, to purchase them privately. Not that that's the way to go, but.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
No.
Sterns.
Aye. Councilmember statements. Jim, I'll start with you.
Well, thank you. I'd like to thank the people from the Pennsylvania Economy League for coming here tonight. They did a very thorough presentation of the financial condition of the city, but I would especially like to thank Andy, his staff, and the department heads for all the time. We have a budget upon us imminently. We have staff shortages. We are dealing with smaller staff than we've had in years, and yet they managed to take the time necessary to provide the information and research to the Economy League. So I thank them for that.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Larry, your comments?
Yeah, I agree with what Jim said, and I also would like to just, you know, stress again, we, everyone is aware we've had an increase in cases in our area. Make sure you do your part, wear your mask, and just, again, thank everyone for being here. I'd like to also take the time to, maybe it's not appropriate, but I'd like to congratulate my daughter and say happy birthday to her as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Autumn, your comments?
Sure. I'll echo Jim's thanks to, to staff for, for working with the Pennsylvania Economy League and in addition to all the work that's, that's going in towards preparing the budget. I appreciate the members of the public that came tonight. Hopefully by seeing, right, like the reality of the kind of financial situation of, of the city, right, like we can understand together just like this, the situation that we're in. And I hope folks will come back. Book your calendars for just about every Wednesday in November, looks like when we're going to be here, to, to make decisions, to review the budget that's prepared by, by city staff and to make key decisions about how we spend our, our money and what services we provide moving forward. So I think the folks that are here tonight, and I encourage people to continue coming back, and for people who are at home, keep watching and send in input and maybe attend if you're able. And I will also, we're moving into Halloween week, which is exciting in Meadville, though this year it'll be different. We'll trick or treat Saturdays, as Andy mentioned, at 6:00 PM, and I wanted to remind folks too about the Meadville Council on the Arts House and Yard Decorating Contest. You can submit your videos, two-minute video entry, to meadvilleartscouncil@gmail.com. That was what Jeff Hall had presented a few weeks ago to us. So they're trying to provide an alternative, maybe for folks who aren't going trick or treating or folks who are missing the parade. So send in those videos and decorate your yard by the 26th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sean?
Okay. I have a few things. First, the hour and a half presentation we all sat through, basically all that we're saying was, we spend more than we take in, and if people want any input on this, this is, we have our budget coming up right now. We have to make a decision on whether we want to continue all our services where they're at now, and raise taxes, or maybe make a few adjustments to our services. It's, we go through it every year. Every year we don't have that presentation, it goes with it, I don't think. Have we had that presentation?
Not in that manner, no. It's been a while.
No. All right. I didn't think so. That was the first time I ever saw that. Now for the things I like. The trick or treat is on Saturday. I just wanted, someone asked me, Andy, if there were any guidelines at all, and we have none that I know of, that's what I said.
We are trumped by the federal government and the Center for Disease Control and the governor, so you should wear a mask, you should, ideally should stick with your family unit, and, and practice as much social distancing as practical.
Okay, well, that's, that's perfect. That's, that gives me my answer for that question. I watched Meadville's football game on TV last Friday night, and there was like a minute and five seconds, and I thought we lost, and I turned it off. Somehow we came back and won the game in a minute and five seconds, so I had to go back and review it again and watch it an hour later when someone told me we actually won the game. It was pretty exciting. They have a playoff game now, next week, and that was against Cash, who, I really like to beat Cash, because they seem to love it anyway when they beat us, so it's nice to beat them. Journey Brown apparently is some kind of injury or something, and he's not going to play, at least right now, that's all I've heard. My kids are friends with people that have talked to them all the time, and that's all I've heard, so just wish him the best and hope everything works out for him. I was hoping to watch some Big Ten games this year, I was still watching, but not with the same enthusiasm. I'd like to remind everybody just to get out and vote. You're not going to see us till the day after election. Heard it many times, I've heard it from the president, elections have consequences. Make sure you get out and vote for whoever you support. That's all.
I encourage citizens to, to find out where their polling place is to that regard. There's some changes, right? So Westbury, if you're on the north end of town, is no longer a polling place, so the Crawford County Voter Services is your best source to get that information.
I believe they've not published it on their website, but if you call, if you call it to voter services, they can let you know where you go instead.
I believe for that one, it is Emmanuel Church.
I think they split, yeah, yeah, some of them go to Meadville.
I just want to thank everybody for being there this evening. Staff, thanks so much for making the arrangements so I could be on teleconference. Appreciate the setup. Just wish everybody a safe Halloween. Use common sense, and make sure you wear a mask, make sure if you're giving out candy, please wear gloves. The virus is growing. We, we have another 18 cases again today. So let's just use common sense and stay healthy, stay, stay safe. With that, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
To executive session.
To executive session.
Yes, yes, please, for litigation in real estate.
So move.
Vogel.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.